I'm going to reconvene the meeting that we started over at the country club, the informational meeting we had there. Can I get a show of hands of the people that are new that didn't do that walk around with us over at the country club? Okay. So I just want to let everybody know tonight is informational. No decisions are going to be made tonight. It's really for the trustees to hear both sides, those in, you know, the country club and also the residents. We're just gaining as much information. So the walk that we did over at, over the country club was to kind of, from a context standpoint, I mean, it's, you can look at things in the aerial view, but it doesn't quite give you that. So, so there were no questions asked there. So everybody's going to be there. The other thing was, there was some concern about the three-minute time rule. Everybody's going to get a chance to talk tonight if you want. There's a couple of things that we want to make sure. And Jim's going to talk about the, we have a court reporter here and he's going to kind of outlay, but before I turn it over to him. So again, we, we want to hear from everybody, but at the same time, we've got to hear from everybody. So we don't want to hear, if you hear something that isn't, you know, that you disagree with, just write it down and we'll get to you. Okay? The other thing, if somebody has already made your point, you know, the point that you're making, then just say, hey, I defer, that was the same point that I was going to make. I mean, we want to hear that, you know, there are many concerns we want to hear, but we don't want to hear the same concern, you know? Again, we get it. Jim, do you want to kind of go over the procedural?
Since we have a court reporter here, it's going to be even more important to, to keep in mind, she can only take down one person speaking at a time. If you can't see, she's got a little machine there between her legs and she can take down everything that we're saying here. So there can be absolutely no one talking over somebody else because she can't take down two people talking at the same time. So for each speaker, the way we're going to do it is, you're going to have to identify yourself and then show up, know to put that name in the transcript. But, you know, somebody disagrees with something or wants to add something and they shout it out from the back, we can't record that. And so you just can't do that. So again, it's natural sometimes to want to respond immediately, but you have to let the speaker talk and we're going to let that speaker give the information that they want to give. And when we're done, we'll turn it over to the next person that they can do, say what they want to say. But we can't have more than one person talking at one time and we can't do a bunch of back and forth either because she can't take all that back. So those are the basic ground rules when you have a court reporter.
Jim, did they need to give their address?
No. I mean, you, you can say that if you want, but, but you have, you know, and we'll probably pass around a sheet too.
Yeah. So we have speaker slips from those that we've, we've gotten in advance. If you do want to speak, that you didn't fill out one of these things, we have, we have it in the back there. So we'll, we'll get to everybody again. If somebody made your point, we want to hear from you, but just, you know, if you can keep it brief from somebody, you know, to get your point. Okay? Not that we don't want, but we can. Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to send it over. I'm going to let, you have anything?
No, I think they're going to me.
Okay. Anything, same thing.
Well, if there was a signed sheet, has everybody signed in to the sheet? Okay, that's all, we're good.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Brookside and let them, they have a packet which John will have up on the screen as, so if you can introduce yourself, whoever wants to begin, and then we'll go for next.
Thank you. Great evening. My name is Catherine Cunningham. I'm an attorney with a law firm in Kegler Brown Hill in Ritter, and I am here on behalf of Brookside Golf and Country Club. As I understand the, just wanted to reiterate, hopefully the procedure is that we, we will present a case and if there's legal counsel and opposition, they certainly have the right to cross-examine witnesses, I guess. I assume that's right, Pete?
Correct.
And then likewise, when other residents talk, we would have, I would have the right to cross-examine. That typically is not an arduous thing, but, and then we, so I'd like to do a very brief opening statement, call some witnesses. We expect to have as our witnesses Max Reed, who is the general manager of the Brookside Golf and Country Club, and he'll give some background information. We've got a lot of facts on this slide. He'll also give backup testimony for some of those things. And then Joey Glander, and Joey, you saw at the country club, he is the PGA head golf professional at the country club, and he will also give some additional testimony, answer any questions that anybody might have over the view of the golf course. Joe Hueselkamp is here. There he is. And he is the golf course superintendent. He will, he has some very brief testimony and, and of course, answers questions you have. And then the civil engineer, Joe Wolf, we've got three Joes, Joe Wolf, who did the development, modification of the development plan that we submitted is also here. So if there are technical questions about that, or distance questions, or survey questions, he is here to answer those. We may or may not have a witness if he doesn't have anything to add, given the testimony we won't, we would make, call him rebuttal. We would like a little bit of rebuttal and that is to present, you know, sort of follow-up witnesses at the end if we have any in the brief closing statement, if that is an appropriate procedure.
Yep.
Okay. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I want to talk a little bit just about sort of where we are and what we're doing. When we filed, I did not put in your packets or in with this, we filed an application, which is public records, it gets sent online, and a letter to the trustees, which your zoning resolution asks us to do when we file. And then we sort of did some explanations for what we believe are the standards of the code and the standards of the site plan, development plan modification. So those are all, we would, we assume that that will all be part of the record in this case, just so there's no point in re-presenting it and going through that again. So we'll save everybody the time and misery of listening to that again. And so I think there are a few things that are important here. One is that this, this country club, and you're going to hear testimony about this, but this country club started in 1927, before there was township zoning, before there was county zoning, before there was anything. And at the time, it was established eventually, 1948, I think Franklin County imposed zoning, and that applied to this golf course. And eventually it was zoned in the county EC, which was an exceptional, give the name of that, sorry. Thank you. Exceptional use zoning classification. And with that, there was a required development plan that had to be part of that zoning classification. And we, that was, that was filed as part of the county zoning eventually in 1982. The township adopted its own zoning resolution. At that point in time, it became subject to township zoning. The golf course remained and the development plan continued. And so that's what we have today. I know that there were some technical questions about what is an amendment to the development plan and what is a variance and whether this is, and whether it is not. We presented those arguments, but I just want to do a very brief summary for you about that. Because it is an exceptional use zoning classification and has a development plan, it's the development plan that controls. The development plan can allow for divergences, which outside of a planned development and development plan, it would be called a variance if it was a straight zoning classification. We don't think there are any required in this because it's, we, we believe and have advocated that some accessory structure specifically, specific to the golf course. You saw that in the materials I submitted to you. I don't need to rehash all that for you. But even if it did, would require a divergence, that is part of the way development plans work. The divergence is within the development plan, development plans come to trustees. So that's why we're here today before the, the board of trustees. And that's what we believe the proper procedure is under your zoning code as it's written. So because of that, we are here to, to, there are nine criteria in your zoning resolution about what you're supposed to consider for a modification of the development plan. We will go through those, but before we get there, I think we're going to have Max Reed come first, give you a little bit about the history of the club and some factual info about the club and the plans for the new safety netting. And then after that, we'll have Joey Glander come up and talk, give you information and testimony about what we observed today. So, and other, other things about the, the country club and why this is an important modification for them. So Max? And I'm going to mostly, I'll, I'll ask them questions if they have them, if I have them that they don't cover, but mostly I'm going to let them talk without a lot of back and forth. I think it's more efficient that way. And, but one thing I am going to ask.
Yes. We, we need to swear in witnesses.
Are you sure the testimony to this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as we got?
I do.
Okay. So Max, before you start testifying about the heart of the matter here, can you say who you are, what your position is, how long you've been there and, and your involvement in this project?
Certainly. Max Reed, I've been the general manager at Brookside since COVID year 2020, so March of 2020. Prior to that, I'd been in the private club business since 1986 when I got out of Ohio State, just under 40 years. I spent 16 years at Muirfield Village in the Memorial Tournament, another couple of years up at Kirtland Country Club in Willoughby, five or six years at Columbus Country Club, and then I've been at Brookside since 2014. I was the controller, then the controller and the AGM. Then I took the certified club manager, CCM, and think of a CPA, I guess, and took the courses to get certified as a club manager, which is a four to five-year process, which I completed as I was the assistant general manager. And then as fate would have it, like I said, at COVID, my predecessor went home to Iowa and I took over the club at that point. One, thanks for hearing us here tonight. Catherine covered a little bit of this. I'll go briefly on the, the next slide up there if you want to go on there, John. One more. One, this is, if, if anybody can see this, this just shows the whole club property and then the, the driving range that we're talking about in the bright yellow in the middle of the screen. But anyway, the club opened in '27. It wasn't, the land was transferred in 1931. Residential lots were plotted around the driving range in '57, and homes were built on those lots between '57 and '64. If you go forward a slide or two here, John, you can go ahead and go one more. This is a picture of a picture on my office wall that's roughly in the 60s because clearly there are homes there. You can see the lack of trees in some areas, but again, the, the same basic footprint that we're operating out of now. So anyway, shortly after the homes were built, the, the barrier that those of you that were over at the club tonight witnessed was put in place. It's chain-linked, it's 20 feet high, 630 feet long, and it's 15 feet inside the property line onto the club property. At the time, that was probably clearly sufficient to keep the balls and keep safety in play in other neighboring properties. And it clearly helped minimize the risk of property damage or personal damage. Since that time, clearly, and more recently, we've had some residential neighbors that have encroached on the golf course property up near the rear of the current barrier, which those of you that were on the brief tour over the club could see that. Catherine alluded to the exceptional use district in Franklin County and continued that in '82. I'll touch a little bit on the technology and the skills in the golf industry over the last 50 to 60 years, which, what did I just say? I've been 40 of those. When I started playing, I was using a Perseman's driver, for example, and little ballata golf balls that you couldn't hit very far. Several years ago, well, let me back up, the, the existing barrier we have now is no longer sufficient. So imagine 1960s, 20 feet and chain link worked. Now we're 50 or 60 years later, the club has to evolve just as we have with our patio. Trees are larger, we've had to redo bunkers, everything changes. Golf is ever-evolving, there's more people involved. Several years ago, we actually had an individual that was struck and that, that was the, the big alarm with the board. I was only the controller at the time, but clearly that's a red flag and that's when all the procedures were put in place to try to get people to drive to the longest area if they were fortunate enough to be able to hit it that far. But safety is paramount, clearly. The board is concerned with that. My job, the very first thing you learn at club manager school basically is protect the club assets. Safety would be one of those in protecting the club against liability. So the last few years, we've had a few more confrontations between neighbors and golf clubs over balls leaving the Brookside property. So it's just, it's, it's not healthy and we clearly want to avoid that. It's not healthy for the members and the guests or the residents. A new barrier is needed for the safety, for the adjoining properties and the members and guests at the club. I'll let Joey testify a little bit about where the golf player's ability is and a little more on the technology. Moving on to the proposed safety netting that we're talking about, the club being myself, Joey, Joe, Carl, some of our board members have consulted with other industry experts. I talked to a guy I worked with at Muirfield Village Golf Club that is now at a club in Philadelphia that has worked with a contractor that we would like to have do this work if it gets approved. And it's golf course architects, the guy that redid our golf course has, has given us ideas and range net contractors themselves. So a lot of clubs, especially older clubs, which we are, are, are very limited with space and have had direct nets like this. I, I don't want the club to get to where the NHL got, and in particular, the Columbus Blue Jackets, where you had the horrible accident, I think in mid 2000s where a young girl was killed and they had direct netting everywhere. I think it went in all the NHL arenas like that. And shortly after that, or maybe just before, they did the same thing at Major League Baseball. And it's, I walk into those venues and I say, man, got to look through that net. And then that's the last time I think of it. But having said that, I, I just don't want to get to the point. I was in this room in the last 15 or 18 months where I think someone, I'll protect their anonymity and said, you're not going to be able to get that done until you have an accident. And it had nothing to do with the driving range net. So I just don't want to get to that. Why did we decide on a modern barrier with the wood poles? And it's got netting that we have sample of here, if anybody would like to see it, is because of the visibility and it only blocks 6% of the light. We'll, we'll show a picture up here where you, you can see that it's very transparent and I would submit that it, it clearly will be much easier to see through than our current We're looking to do 70 feet, 10 feet would be in the ground, roughly 800 feet long. We're giving ourselves a little leeway. I think it's drawn up to only go 660 feet, and that includes the anchors on either end. It's going to be roughly 30 feet from the northern property line. What you saw tonight was 15 feet. So again, we're 15 feet inside of that. When I originally talked to some of the, the neighbors and reached out to them, I, I said that the club's plan was to leave that in place, so as to not change their view at all if that was the desire. All right. The, the netting that I was referring to, that, that's going to do the best job of protecting the neighbors, the members and the guests at Brookside. It'll give the club the opportunity to remain well, well-respected and attract championships and golfers for championships and retain more young members for the years to come. We, we clearly want to be a, a, a good partner with Perry Township and be strong for Perry Township like we have been, and this is helping us maintain and reach that goal. There are 133 homes that border the club property north of 161, and there are eight to 10 residents that are adjacent to the driving range. So just for perspective of how many folks could be impacted by this. Last but not least, Brookside's within Perry Township. We want to continue to operate in the township as one of the highly respected clubs in the area and provide a modern, safe facility and contain range balls and be a good neighbor.
Max, can you talk a little bit more about the tournaments and why it's important to have higher safety netting for the, for the club and its liability?
Certainly. When we have the, the US Open qualifier, if, if you're not a golfer, that's usually done right around the time of the Memorial Tournament, and it's been very popular to come to Brookside when we host that. And those players that are competing for that championship would not be able to hit golf balls on our range without heading for that far-left corner. Certainly it would need to, certainly couldn't hit every club in their bag, which again, to getting Brookside to remain a prestigious club, that, that, that is what you want to do.
And why is that, why are those kinds of tournaments important to the club?
The prestige, the, the, Columbus likes to have it, just like Jack Nicklaus, in my opinion, built the Muirfield Village Golf Club, so Columbus could be proud of something. Brookside, as I've been there, I grew up in Clintonville, this is something that our members and our staff, we pump our chests out when we host it. I can reference a couple of years ago, the, it was on Golf Channel, the longest day in golf, and all of us, members and staff were fired up because they said, now we're going back over to Brookside, the more challenging course versus the other one we were playing. So it's a source of pride for the, for clearly the members and the longstanding members. That, that's why it's important. We want, we will, we want to not be precluded from being available for those events by our driving range.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Trying to go back to your presentation, you mentioned a development plan. You mentioned the year 1948.
Yes.
And then you mentioned 1982, when township had zoning resolution enacted. Do we have a copy of that development plan? So do we have a record of the township trustee approving that development plan? Do you want to address that?
Me too.
We tried to find a development plan at the township and did a public records request, requesting a copy of the development plan. And the township, at least legal counsel, did an investigation and found that the, those records had been submitted to the historic, when, if through the public records procedure you have to review, so they went to the Ohio Historical Society and were all destroyed. So we do not have the development plan that was approved by the township. The township doesn't have the development that was approved by them. When we consulted with legal counsel, the, and frankly, the way that the law would look at it is that what you have now is the development plan, and it's the alteration of the existing conditions that are today, that is the development plan that has to be amended. When I consulted with your legal counsel about how we do that, we reviewed the code and agreed that we would have to amend because there was already a barrier up, that it would be, it would have to be amended. County, same situation when it became zoned in the township, the county destroyed all its records.
So I share the county planning commission, and every case that comes before me always has to have a development plan.
Yes.
The property owner has it or not, they have to develop it.
Yes.
You're asking to amend something that doesn't exist, is what you're saying?
We're asking to amend the existing conditions with a development plan to show the change of condition. Yes.
You're, you're asking to amend the current conditions.
Yes.
But not a development plan. Because we don't, apparently the township doesn't have it.
Right.
County doesn't have it. Historical Society doesn't have it.
No, they destroyed it.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear that there is not a development plan that in existence that you can present to us.
Right.
Okay.
Or that you can present to me, right? There isn't one.
To you. Yes. For my time, but yes, yes.
The, the zoning code required, required that there, there be a development plan. At the time, they rezoned it to that zoning classification, so it could not have been in that zoning classification without a development plan. But the existing development plan that occurred at that time is not, there's no record of it.
But we can't prove that.
Other than what I have been advised by township, right? I mean, I don't know. I didn't send it to the records commission, but that's what they advised.
So have we talked to the county prosecutor's office about this?
I have not, but also when the township adopted zoning, the township essentially adopted county zoning, right? With the county map at that time. So when property is zoned, obviously you had the county's zoning text and you had a county zoning in the township, but when the township residents approved zoning in the 80s, the plan that was before them was almost essentially the same text and the same map. So when voters approved that, there wasn't, there wasn't a, a, a development plan that would have been submitted by the country club. We were just putting that zoning designation upon their property, carrying it over from the county, if that makes sense.
And township require the property owner, in this case, the country club, to develop a development plan, to put together, create a development plan and have that passed by the board of trustees?
If.
Is this yes or no?
Yes.
That's all I mean, no?
We would argue no, because we're not performing use. Yeah.
Kind of what is what you can prove, not what you can say.
Yes.
Yes, I understand. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your answer.
Yeah.
Max had the other one of those.
Got distracted.
So Max, first of all, thank you for coming.
Sure.
We, we value the country club, we value both country clubs, okay, in our township, and we, we value you the same level that we value the residents. So there, you had mentioned in your, your statement, your, your testimony, that there were some property owners who had encroached on club property, and I could see that. So what is the position in regards to that encroachment? Does it have anything to do with this fence? And because it's obviously, it's a point that's been raised, a point that you're understanding. So the, or should I ask your legal counsel, what's your?
The, the position of the club was that, again, it would be less disturbing potentially to the residents along the current barrier if we did nothing to that, given some of the encroachment and some of the growth that we have there, and then just erect the new barrier in front of that. When that was discussed, one of the neighbors said, please clear it out and that will motivate me to clear mine out. So we, we don't have a formal position. Clearly, we'd love to maintain it like we do. There was, there's an area off number, over off Greenmail Avenue, that I think has come to the township before, and, and we've been a good neighbor there and maintained a larger area than we had originally for that purpose. So we, we're, we're willing to work with the residents and the township, whatever they would like to do. The important thing for us is to get the barrier up so we take away the risk of someone getting hurt.
And I understand the safety liability argument. I can see both sides of the story. So I, I appreciate your statement.
Anything else? Okay. Thanks.
My name is Joey Glander. I'm the PGA head golf professional at Brookside Golf and Country Club.
Joey, we're going to swear you in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
During the testimony to give this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth as we got?
I do.
I'm the PGA head professional at Brookside. I came on board there in the spring of, April of 2022. So this is my fourth year currently at the club. I have been a PGA professional since 2012, have been all over the country at many top clubs, many of which have range netting at the border of their properties to protect neighbors or on the interior to protect golfers as well.
So before you go on, can you tell them your education and training to be PGA?
Yes. So I went to the Ohio State University. I enrolled in their professional golf management program. I was the fifth graduate of that program. And then from there, I attained my PGA membership in 2012. And then I have been at clubs such as Baltis Row Golf Club in New Jersey, Ridgewood Country Club in New Jersey, and then most recently, prior to Brookside, the club at Morningside, a private club in Palm Springs, California. That gives you a little bit of my background. As, as many of you know, maybe non-golfers, but PGA of America is one of the largest professional organizations. There are over 30,000 of us that are experts in the game, in the game of golf. There are over 30,000 of us that are experts in the game, in the game of golf. And for my career, I chose the private club side. So I have become well-versed at a variety of different country clubs. And so I'm happy to share here.
Before you go on, for us non-golfers, tell me, what does a golf professional do? What's their job at a country club?
I manage the entire golf experience at the country club. So from the time you arrive, it's membership service, it is merchandising the golf shop, it is the golf facility itself, the quality of the driving range, the setup. And my number one goal is to serve our membership and their needs, as well as, as Max mentioned, try to keep Brookside a top-tier club, not only in central Ohio, but around the country. And that's what helps us be successful and attain, be attractive to potential new members. Anything else? I think you see, I am a golfer. That is a part of the program, yeah. Again, I teach golf too, so if I can't do it myself, that lose credibility there pretty quick. But I'm not playing this week in the Tour Championship in Atlanta, though. I'm here. So this slide here, we're gonna go over the challenges we face now with the placement of our current driving range, as well as a trajectory study that we worked with. The designer, the instruction company is gonna do the net, as well as the golf course architect. So those that came to the site, you can see there is a rather short distance from the front right, especially, front right of the range to the current barrier. If you go on that line, you know, I mentioned, it's 184 yards, which for me personally, that's a seven iron. So you can see that we have a younger membership and a lot of good players. We estimate that just over 10% of the members are able to carry their drivers 280 yards. So that'll give you some context as to when I go over the yardages, what we can attain, and how many that we're trying to contain and give us as much safety as we can for the safety net. Due to the short distance on the right side, as mentioned by Catherine and Max, we have our golfers aim left. Again, this is to contain the golf balls from the neighbors' properties. When I first arrived on property, we had signs that said, aim left. I showed everybody that's at the site, and we now have a max yardage sign that we utilize. But the first thing I think I told Max, when he asked, what do you think of the facility? I said, this is very dangerous. I mean, we are actually pointing our members to protect the neighbors at ourselves. We have had multiple members hit on the first fairway because of this. So to me, you know, safety is first and foremost when it comes to, you know, serving our members and guests of the property. So that was kind of an eye-opening for me. And human nature, we can do all we can. You know, I have my golf professional staff, those that teach, we keep an eye, make sure if someone's hitting a driver past that max yardage, we go tell them. But again, we don't have 24/7, we can't be out there. And if you get downwind, there's so many factors, variables, that our goal is to really reduce those and limit that opportunity.
And Joey, can you point out on the map what you're talking about, about being hitting at your own golfers?
Yeah, so you could see the top left of the yellow triangle, that points all the way to, that's the first green there. And then if you see the white oval shapes on the right, those are bunkers that are on the right side of the fairway. And then just the proximity of the hole in itself is pretty close to that driving range. So you can imagine that if we're pointing people towards that way, it doesn't take that errant of a tee shot to become dangerous for those playing the golf hole. Modern golf equipment and technology, the USGA is finishing a study right now trying to roll the golf ball back on tour and for amateur golfers. So the distance is seen as an issue in the whole world of golf. And we're no different. You know, we have top technology, you know, that our members utilize to help them hit it further. That's the goal. Everybody wants to hit their driver further, right? And we want to be able to have a facility that can help our membership and guests safely practice their game, which is one of the main reasons why they utilize the country club there. Today's golfers, they're also more athletic. You can see it on tour, I can see it in our membership, we have an active athletic facility. Everyone's trying to get stronger, so it's how athletic they're becoming, their strength. Again, with the technology that's increasing these distances over when the original barrier, so we're looking at 60 years ago, right? 63 years ago. A lot has changed since then. And then our increased activity levels. So those that went on the site, you could see the conditions of the turf on the tee box. It is utilized a lot and almost full all day, every day. So there are a lot of golf balls. I didn't do the math, but that's something I probably should have done. How many golf balls are hit per day? You figure you have crates of 300 golf balls, 16 stations daily. We set those about four or five times every day. So you can tell the amount of golf balls that are hit in a given day during peak season there. You go to the next slide there. This is gonna start this trajectory study that was done by the company, the contracted company for the safety net. It's kind of right to left, so you could see those diagonal lines. On the right is number one, then the center, number two. To the left of the current barrier is number three. So if you look at this chart, this trajectory chart here, F stands for front of the tee box, M is middle of the tee box, the current range tee, and B is the back of that tee box. So that is going to the closest point of the barrier. You can see in that highlighted area, those are, that's the containment we're trying to have. So according to the study, at 184 yards where they're at, this is the flight of an 80 compression golf ball hit by a nine-degree driver. And that is at 120 feet is what a net would be to 100% contain a golf shot at that apex. So that's 124 feet at 184 yards. And then you see, as we get closer, if you go to the back of that tee box, it's 233 yards to the far right of the current barrier. And that would get you right, just under 90 feet there, to have complete containment. If you go to the next slide for me? Here's slide number two. That's the center of the grass tee. So you're looking at the front, you can see the, we'll use that 233-yard reference point there again. That is from the middle of the tee box. That is at that 233 yards. And again, that gets you to the 80, just under that 90 feet again. So when you look at these numbers and seeing how high is recommended, now that is 100% containment with just that data point of the trajectory. We know, we have 395 golf members, spouses, they all dependents. Not all of them fall in that category. So our goal is not to try to contain every single person. We can still utilize the systems we have in place. But we want to be able to get the majority of that. So when we talk to that little over 10% of the golfers that might fall into that, that's how we came up with the 70 feet. And we figure from the front third of that tee box, that will contain 85% of our golfers. So only if we're all the way forward will 15% of our golfers be affected and either have to flight their driver down, or just not hit driver when the tee is up there. If you look on the right, so this is where you can tell that far left of the barrier, that just proves why we were pointing them there, because that was our only option at the time. Our goal is to, we want to direct everybody down the middle of the driving range and have that, that's where we came up with the 70-feet number, so that we can tell if you're on the left-sided tee, right-sided tee, you're gonna aim down the middle of the range, it's gonna protect people on the right, it's gonna protect people on the left, and this safety net would protect people behind. So that's where. With the company, as well as with Don Scott Airport, came up with that 70-foot high of the range. You go to the next slide here. I talked about some top clubs. Marion Golf Club is in the top 10 in the country. It's outside of Philadelphia. Very similar numbers, you can see, we're 233 yards to the center, this is 237. They erected a 70-foot safety net there. Yes, you can see there aren't holes, but there is a railroad track. So that was gonna help them contain, and I'm sure there may have been safety issues with the train, an active railroad there. So that was just to give an example there. And if you can go to the next slide for me? This is an example of a 75-foot net. This would be the same design as one of our contractor's options here. 75-foot wood pole, recent project. Those trees there are on the other side of that safety net. So this will give you a good idea of the visibility through it. If you go to the next slide? Yep. Max, read, just put on the, that's a sample of the netting that would be used in the proposed safety net. And then that's just a photo to show the transparency there when you're actively on that, on that range. And then if you go to the next one, you could see the solidity, 6.9% of netting component. So these are just the specs of what the net's made of, as well as that mentions that visibility. And if you go to the next slide here, you could see there's, I know it's kind of tough, my apologies, we did the best here. The blue line on top, we marked the tree, if you noted the pines there on the left that we were standing under, those are at the site. That tree just to the right of those pines is measured at 85 feet in height. So to scale, we drew what the 70-foot line across would look like, standing from the, that is just behind the center of our range tee box, to give you a visual, so you can relate it to the current tree line.
And I'm gonna hand you what I marked as applicant's exhibit five. Are those the trees you're talking about?
Yes, the one on the left is, yeah. Yep. Okay, you can go to the next slide here. And that is just showing, as Max mentioned, where the current barrier is. And the bold line is that 15 feet in front of that current position. And then if you go, I think it might be one more? You go. This is the design of that net, where you can visualize where it, where, if you're at the site, you saw those red stakes, that's, those are the far right, far left of the anchors there. So you can see how the net is tapered up from the left, there are 13 wooden poles that are in the design there, so that'll give you a feel for what it may look like on the back of our driving range.
And Joey, what do the horizontal lines represent?
Those are, would be the seams of the netting, so those aren't crossbars. Those would just be where the netting attaches to create the higher, increase the height there. Then everyone that was at the site could see, these are just some extra barrier photos where you could tell, tell the growth. And this will give you an idea for where it currently is, and you visualize that 15 feet in front is where we're looking in the proposal. Go next here, just a couple other looks of the property line up to the barrier there. It's one more slide like that. You see those posts with the pink ribbon? That is the property line there. And then our barrier in that middle photo is to the left, so that's from the far right of the range, where we entered the back end during our site visit. You go one more. These are just examples of the current containment, how many golf balls are hit, showing them right in front of the barrier there. It'll be hard to tell, but those at the site saw, there's a few also over the fence and in the yards.
Quick question, give me your background. The green fence that exists there today, what is the club's plan? Once hypothetically, the board says, yes, you can have that 70-foot fence, what would be the club's plan for that green fence?
I think that, yeah. I think that's where you were going with me, too. Again, if it's the desire to get rid of it, our plan would be clearly to get rid of it and clear the area on the other side of the course where we cleared roughly 20 feet, maybe 20 yards. We would mow it like the rest of the driving range. All the imperfections, where luckily nobody hurt themselves, would be leveled out so that the mower could go through there and we would keep that mowed like the rest of the range.
Because it doesn't look right now, you know, outside of the, it doesn't look like anybody's maintaining behind the fence. And that's where, you know, it's like the encroachment that we saw and that sort of thing. So that would change?
Yes.
That you guys would?
Absolutely. If that's everybody's desire, we would do that. Again, we haven't gone down that road, trying to be a good neighbor.
So in terms of the trees, like, you know, when we were out there and somebody had raised the fact that, you know, like, hey, probably have to line up these pine trees, what about moving the fence or the potential fence forward? Did not even encroach upon those? Because the thing, you know, Joey, I'm listening to you talk, and you know, it seems to me like you have target greens, and then this is for driving purposes, you know? But if I'm driving, if I'm driving to drive, how am I improving my game by just smashing a ball into a net? You know, like, what's the, what am I gaining as a member to have this giant net that I can just go out? I mean, I?
You can see the ball flight up until the apex of your driver, right? So you can see, ideally, at least 233 yards, right? That we can hit it there and see your ball flight. It's not like hitting into a screen, where if I, I don't want to have to tell my members, if you're gonna hit driver, you gotta go into the simulator, and you're just never gonna see the ball go past a six.
So are your balls, are the balls that you're currently using restricted in any way, like currently?
They are basic, they're not flight restrictive golf balls, but they are restrictive compared to what you would play on the golf course.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they are, they're not the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how does that, how does that change in terms of the distance that, you know, your members are hitting? I mean, obviously, it's not even like it could be shorter?
Current, about, just about 5%. It's not a ton.
Not a ton, yeah.
Could I add that the plan, if we get the new net, is, as Joey mentioned, force the target to the middle of everything, and we're gonna reposition and redo the greens on the range and put, imagine a fairway, so that no matter where you are on those 16 or 18 bays, you can aim for the fairway to your point, if you want to hit your driver, a bigger club, you'll have a target instead of just seeing how far you can hit it to the left.
And then the wood, the telephone pole, the wood versus, you know, aluminum steel, whatever they name it now, you get less poles by going steel, or are it same amount, same amount of poles?
But I don't remember that.
It was same amount, the only difference would be if we wanted to go higher than 75 feet, they would need to be steel.
But you're not, you're not, that you're not able? Because the only concern I have with, you know, wood, using wood, is, I mean, you go anywhere and you see, you know, you see telephone poles that are like this. And that, you know, I just, like, what did you guys talk about that whole thing in the design? Like, why wood over steel? You know, is there any?
One, the steel would be if we wanted to go higher, and we didn't want to be top golf, and we didn't want to go for 100% containment, because that would be over the tree line and just probably more than we needed. And Don Scott wanted us, I think we had some hurdles, we'd have to jump if we went above 75 feet. And I would subject you, I don't know this, but I haven't seen a picture or heard of anything where the net that we're proposing, one like this, the pole is leaned over like you that we're proposing in one like this, the, the pole is leaned over like you and I would see driving down one of these old farm roads potentially, so.
Is there, was there a cost factor discussed?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And what was that discussion about?
How much more, how much more it was? Yeah. You know? How much more?
Yeah.
Discussion, I remember about a half a million more.
And was that like for like? Sorry, can you repeat that? Was that like for like, was that same highs, same height poles, same?
I, I think that it was. And again, we, we eliminated that pretty quickly with the cost differential, and we thought that this would blend with what we're trying to do more than putting a steel pole.
So did you guys do any, like the one blue line, yellow line, did you guys do any from the neighborhood looking? Like, what are they looking at? You know, terms of blue line, yellow line, you know, like what that's gonna look like from their property out?
I, I, without trespassing, I was in one of the neighbor's house once to look at the view they had, but what I could tell, and I have several pictures that I took in winter, and then some this summer from Merwin Drive, and I, I have trouble finding the existing.
That's right.
The existing barrier now, because the trees are so high, I, I would submit that I think it's gonna be very difficult to see unless you walk up to the property.
So this netting kinda reminds me of what you would see at like the hockey game or, or, or baseball game. Is that the exact, is that the same netting? Is it a different netting? What's the, what's the difference?
Same fabrication, it's just the smaller. The, the diameter is not as big, because golf balls are
Right.
smaller.
Yeah.
I believe it's one inch. It's on that. Design. Open mesh, one inch, yeah.
And Joey, when you were talking about the trajectory of the balls, do you also have electronic means to monitor that?
We do, yeah.
In, in terms of the question about seeing where they go, or what good does it do to hidden that, what are those trajectory things do for you? The electronic means that you?
It allows our members to see how far they can carry it. So again, this is, you know, helps us with data, so we can say, okay, I'm, I'm giving a driver fitting, I see you're carrying it X amount. We have to go over in the far right of the range if it's available and aim that way. Otherwise, I can't fit you. Right? Properly. I can't fit you properly. I could fit them in a simulator, but then, again, as you mentioned, ball going six feet, we want you to be able to see ball flight for every club in your bag.
Joey, what was the lowest round you ever had?
At, at Brookside or anywhere?
Anywhere.
Anywhere? Uh, 68 if all just roll lower was my best. I was much younger.
You made me feel worse, but that's okay.
Not my intention, but you asked the question.
I did.
I have to answer honestly.
You do. I have a choice of questions.
It's, it's difficult, that, that's what we'll call like a chain link fence basically, it's sort of now.
Yeah.
That's difficult to, uh, can't mow under that, it's hard to get a weed, get a weed whacker underneath that. On a fence like this where it's, uh, are you able to better maintain sort of the grass underneath the fence? Can you like raise the log a little bit to kinda keep it clear?
Well, Joe can probably speak more on that, but it's-
This do cook?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we had a discussion, if we left the existing one, would we not bring the new one all the way down?
Right. We really be though deep, that. Just a couple feet so you can keep it cleaner than that.
Again, if, if there's, if, if we pay attention to it, we can keep it looking very nice. Fair.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Joe.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Joe Hueselkamp to come forward, he is the golf course superintendent. I'm also gonna hand you applicant's exhibit six, you have it in your packets, and you do not have it on the screen. That is, um, so I'm gonna have you identify and talk about, but let's start in, who are you?
Where are you?
So in the testimony you're about to give, will be the truth, the whole truth, and if you have a choice to help with that?
I do.
Get your name for the record, what you do at, at the golf club, and your experience in getting there.
Okay, uh, my name is Joe Hueselkamp, originally from Walpoken, Ohio. Went to Ohio State and graduated in 2007 with a bachelor in turf grass science and agronomy. And I've worked at a couple other golf courses, one in Colorado, did a few years at Ohio State before I joined Brookside in 2008. And I moved up from a spray technician to assistant superintendent to my current role as golf course superintendent.
And what are your responsibilities as a golf course superintendent?
To take care of the golf course, daily setup, and we maintain all the grounds on, on the property.
Who's the driving range?
Take care of the driving range, um, the grass on the driving range. Joey takes care of setting the balls and, um, maintaining the backstands and that sort of stuff.
Who takes care of picking up the balls?
That is Joey's operation as well.
And are you, do you have things to do with that as, as well?
Sure, we're constantly out there, uh, mowing the grass on the range, so we often come across, uh, golf balls on the range as well. We'll fix sprinklers out there, you know, string trim trees and that sort of thing.
And tell me, have you had occasions to view piles of golf balls on the driving range?
Occasionally we come across some piles of golf balls at the back of the range.
Okay. And do you have any idea where those come from?
I don't have a real good idea, but I imagine that they're probably ball returned from other properties.
Okay. And what do you get when you come across those?
Well, they clean them up so that we can maintain the grass around them.
And what about the, the chain link barrier? What about the, the, um, there's been a lot of talk about the trees and the encroachments and that? Is that something that you have maintained over the time when you're there?
We have maintained it. Uh, before this winter, there was a row of pine trees in front that we would, we would limb up, string trim under, mow under, and then go along the chain link fence and string trim as well. And, uh, up until very recently, we would go behind in string trim, you know, up against fences as well. But, uh, uh, as of, uh, most recently, um, I've not been back there to do that.
Okay. And is there, is there a reason for that?
Just been kind of a touchy subject, I guess. I don't wanna step on anybody's toes just yet, and, uh, we're trying to, um, take care of other things. It's been extremely wet this year, so getting back there has been a bit of a challenge as well.
Okay. And when you say, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, what's that mean?
Just that, uh, you know, there's other people's plants and stuff encroaching on the fence and don't wanna, you know, make anybody mad, I guess.
When you're saying other people, you're saying that not, it's not part of the golf course property?
That's correct.
It's not their vegetation?
Uh, correct.
All right. I don't have any other questions.
You have one of the toughest jobs.
That is correct.
No, just request, you have a tough job. We're gonna get to that.
I just wanted to see if I could look at the, the, um, screen that you have up on the table, if we can look at it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other questions. Unless, if, if the board has any questions about the, um, the development plan that we show, the location of the net, or any of those distances, civil engineers here, happy for him to answer any of your questions. I think the documents speak for themselves, um, and we assume that you can read them. But if there are any questions, happy to have him answer any of them for the board.
Can you say the belt plan?
Yes, I understand. You and I are gonna disagree about that.
Okay.
The plan that shows the location of the fence.
Excellent.
The new, the new safety netting.
Thank you.
Yes, on the existing range as it is today. Got it.
Got it.
Thank you. We'll wait for rebuttal in your presentation.
So I'm gonna go, I'm just gonna go as I have received them in my packet, so, uh, Mark Rose. Gets sworn in and
Is that the testimony that this proceeding will be the true, the whole truth, and if you have a choice to help with that?
I do. I have a few figures here.
I'm sorry, can you just give your names?
My name is Mark Rose, and I live in 6669 Merwin Road, one of the properties is, uh, with the green fence behind us. Can I give you these figures to?
Okay.
Joey, have, and then if you have another copy, I'd like to give one to-
I, I would like to give them.
Yeah, absolutely, and I need to give one to- Brookside's legal counsel as well.
Let's see. Three more copies, so.
We do share.
What's that?
Yeah.
On the top are the figures. So, and then the bottom is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, you know, my comments, if you don't mind. A copy of my comments are on the back sheet. Okay, after buying our house in 1994, the only time we found golf balls in our yard was a spring weekend each year when PGA members were practicing for a US Open qualifying tournament. Otherwise, very few balls were found, and none from November to April. In May 2002, Brookside Country Club presented a plan to the neighbors north of the driving range. If they could replace the current 10-foot fence, that's as seen on figure one, with a 20-foot fence, they were confident that they wouldn't, that we wouldn't see any more golf balls hit into our backyards. In the summer of 2002, the 20-foot fence was installed, see figure two. In the current development plan, BCC claims the fence is 30 feet instead of 20 feet, and that it was installed in the 1960s. But as you can see, it was installed actually in 2002. Since then, three events occurred that have seriously aggravated the situation. In 2002, BCC approximately doubled the length of the tee driving area, which resulted in a shortening of the distance of the tree line of approximately 85 feet. You can compare figures three and four to see that. For the last 20-plus years, the majority of the balls hit over the fence have occurred when the tee boxes are in the forward position. Second, a garage structure was built about 2016 in a location significantly advanced and to the east of the previous tee area, with a much shorter distance to the back of our properties. See figure five. It shortened the distance to our properties by approximately another 50 feet, and this is Google Maps, uh, measure. It's an approximation, but in the five or six days that we had, that's the best we could build. In addition, we started receiving balls into our yard on a daily basis, and surprisingly, year-round. Third, this spring with no notice and no good explanation, BCC severely removed the entire line of pine trees that was knocking down a significant portion of the golf balls that would have entered our backyard. In 25 years, they've grown up to 10 to 15 feet above the 20-foot fence. See figure six. And we're adding several feet in height a year. In summary, BCC took three actions since building the 20-foot fence in 2002 that together caused most of the continuing golf ball problem. This latest attempt to enter on the fence zoning issue to install this incredible eyesore, allegedly for our safety, is just another example of how for decades BCC has been disingenuous in their relationship with their neighbors. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next, Mary Rose.
Excellent figures too. You want my affiliations?
Can you, uh, please wear it, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. So the testimony you're giving, this proceeding will be the true, the whole truth, and if you have a choice to help with that? I can. Okay.
I just say the full name.
Mary Ann Rose. Um, I have some figures too. This is a write-up basically of what I'm gonna say, but, um, what I really want the board to look at is, um, I only got a definition of a fence, but also, um, the, the picture here. Probably the main thing. Okay. Sorry. Great. Well, thank you, Board of Trustees, for listening to my objections to the BCC plan modification. Um, the document has a statement in it that zoning code has no established standards that apply to driving range accessory structures. And I maintain that the proposed structure featuring 70-foot wooden poles and netting between actually fits the definition of a fence. And I actually provide a couple examples, um, on Wikipedia, something else that fence definitions. Fence is a structure that encloses an area and is usually constructed from posts that are connected by boards, wire, railing, or netting. This describes the structure that Brookside proposes to build a fence, and I believe that fences are clearly in our zoning code, the township zoning code, so it's not a new creation. The code also dictates that development plans must be consistent in all respects with the purpose, criteria, intent, and standards of the code, compatible in appearance with the surrounding land uses, and designed in a way to minimize unreasonable adverse impact on existing residential areas. I feel that the proposed project will violate these township code requirements for these reasons. The fence exceeds codes by 64 feet of the fence code, and its massive scale is incompatible with the appearance of the surrounding residential properties. It's not designed to minimize unreasonable adverse effects, which include depriving me of the beauty and enjoyment of my property, and also decreasing the property value. I ask you to take a look at figure two, which shows the photo of the fence from the other side, from the property side, uh, residential property side. And many of us do have a very clear view of that fence in our backyard. And just see if you don't consider that it's grossly out of character with the landscape, and even so high that it's gonna block. It's gonna interfere with my view of the sky. Um, consider whether you would like to have this fence in your backyard 30 feet from your property line. Also, imagine a potential buyer walking in our backyard confronted by that fence. I think it literally will scare away some buyers, should we choose- I think it literally will scare away some buyers should we choose to sell and lower the value of our property. Um, so bottom line is, I think that the project violates the township code. Depries me of the beauty, enjoyment, and full value of my property. As a final note, I would like to basically talk about this meeting that BCC had with neighbors last spring. They invited neighbors for what they called a discussion. However, they offered no compliments. There was no real discussion there. It was simply this plan presented. And no discussion about possibly setting back their net farther away from the property. Or setting back their tees. Mark Rose has shown that over the years, the encroachment has been. The driving range. You know, they're talking about a few plants we have grown behind our fence as encroachment. The encroachment has been the movement of the tees forward. We don't see why they can't consider moving them backward and moving their fence backward too. It's not that we're not willing to have a fence at all, it's that we don't want it thirty feet from our property line. My conclusion is their problem is self-inflicted. And I would encourage them to work with us for a solution that makes everyone happy.
Chair, so the country club's counsel would like to cross-examine the witness.
Just have a couple of questions.
Ma'am, could you come back up, please?
You testified that it was gonna damage your property value. You've got any appraisals done or attempted to sell your property or anything in terms of determination made?
In three business days, it wasn't possible to do that. But I think it's reasonable if so, if you had a buyer that's really interested in the appearance of their backyard. They might very well be turned away by that.
Okay.
And I think if you turn some buyers away, you know, enough of them over time, that that kind of lowers the value of their property.
Okay. And when you say you, it will affect the beauty and enjoyment of your property. You're talking about the looking at a net if everything's cleared out, having a clear view of the golf course. But the beauty and enjoyment is the net itself.
No, we did not have a clear view of the golf course. We had a very nice screen of, you had a nice screen of trees until you removed that. We appreciated, um. We just don't, okay, so what am I trying to say here? I think it's an ugly net. Okay, and I think it will enough very much change the character of my backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, do caps.
They're close enough.
Ladies and gentlemen, and ladies. The testimony given in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and you want the truth held back?
I do. Gentlemen and ladies. I'm Chuck Capps, and for the record, I'm representing some of the people who are property owners. I happen to be a property, adjacent property owner myself, although not directly behind the area. I'm just east of the, this one, if you stand there and look east, you'll see where my house is. But at any rate, I've been a member there for, or should I say, I've been a property owner for the past thirty-seven years and a former member of Brookside. And I, in my, I just like to, very quick query, because I can probably cut this very quickly, short. If I did submit a speaking request and I did have some points I made there as a, call it a legal memorandum, if you want. Points of, you know, the zoning code, the BZA here that I think ought to be looked at, or should I say the BZA's code. Is that part of the record?
You could make this part of the record.
I would like to make it part of the record if that's possible. I. Obviously, I do need a copy, yes.
You have a copy of that?
Several of them, yeah.
We, we don't.
Yeah.
They have.
They have copy. I can give it to your counsel, maybe, I'm sorry, Catherine, okay.
Could you just, for the record, say who you're representing here today?
I'm representing, the roses have asked me to step in. Also. I'm an attorney here as their attorney and I'm an adjacent property owner, so in both capacities.
So you're testifying?
I will be testifying in effect, actually, I have questions more than testifying. So. Basically, I've noted.
Testify as a witness and as a counsel? I mean, last time I checked, no, but. You know, I think, to the rule of the civil procedure.
Well.
Don't apply to a twenty-five oh six proceeding, which is what this is, so. I was talking about ethics of that. Well, yeah, but what I would say in terms of tonight, outside of the ethics issue. You assign the credibility as you should choose, right?
If you'd like, I can testify, or should I say, I can speak as an attorney and then I can turn around and speak as a witness, if you would like.
I just don't think you could be a witness and represent somebody in the same proceeding.
Well, the roses are asking me to step in, okay? But there's things as an adjacent property owner I'd like to note too, if possible. And I do have some things to say here that I know personally that I believe needed to be correct the record at. Specifically respected length of time that, in fact, I'll just state it right now. I've lived behind that property for thirty-seven years. I grew up there, my parents were long-time members. And I find it interesting, you know, to hear it said that the. Driving range there has been there forever because it isn't, it hasn't been, okay? I can remember as a twelve, thirteen-year-old taking golfing lessons on the driving range, which at that point in time. Basically was where the swimming pool is now in face south. And in addition to that, you're also looking at the fact that at one time there was a practice hole. That was between the tenth, I believe, and the eighteenth hole. That the club had. I realize that it's been no longer there. It's been gone for a good ten, fifteen years that I remember. But it did serve as a long drive hole, and that's one of the points I would like to make here. And I would like to ask also. Mister Antner. Or Mister Reed here, when they, they talk about the studies, in fact, I guess I'll just launch right into that. Mister Reed, you said a study was done, you talked about an architect, but did that architect. Do anything or do any kind of a study that was other than the fence, the placement of the fence itself? In other words, did he look at alternatives?
Yes.
And what were they?
There, for that piece of land, we were talking, the range, we talked about alternatives, because I brought it up, could we go a different way? And the answer was that would shorten, we need to fence them all.
Did he consider, had he considered in this, whatever it was?
Excuse me, I just, I need to. Sorry, turn around.
Not a problem. Was this a written study? No. It was just a, in other words, was it informal or was it formal? Did you pay him for this?
For, just for the record. When Max testified, he went through to cross-examination. I have somebody who's testifying as witness and also acting as counsel and. So just for the record, we want to object to the fact that it's unusual, it's a role in the order. And it is, but. It may be exceeded the scope of track, but I'm not sure about that yet, so.
Well. It is in a court of law, but I would, I'd suggest that I'm entitled to some. But I'll try to rephrase things another way and be quick a little bit, okay? I realize there's people who are gonna figure out, and I don't want to labor. But my point is this, okay? Did you consider any other place besides, I think, well, let's start with the pre-able here. I think we can both agree, and even the property owners, that you sort of outgrown that area there. You already mentioned it with, you know, golfers driving farther, the equipment you have, people just drive balls longer, okay? Have you considered other alternatives? To where that place could be? It strikes me that it's mainly. Most of those holes, with the possible exception of the farthest one you have there, those pins that you have out there on the driving range. You could probably hit with a, with a seven iron, you know, or maybe even a wedge, if you're willing to. Maybe I'll toss that.
What part of the property?
In other words, basically, you've got a short-range, you know, a driving range, not really a distant driving range. It's more suited to that, isn't it?
Possible to just allow somebody to hit a ledge in a seven iron?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is that, you know, you're already said that it's, at this point. You know, using a driver or maybe even a one or a two, you've got some people that are gonna sail it right over the fence the way it is.
We have some, the way it is, that could hit it.
Yeah, so in fact, though, what you really have is basically a good short-range or a pitching or a, you know, a, a short-range course. You know, with a short game. It's more suited for that, the way it is now. Yes, but the way it is now, it's better suited to that, wouldn't you say? Not for everybody, okay. And you've looked at alternatives, we've discussed, I believe, Ms. Rose said about moving the fence back. You know, and maybe moving the tee backs, box back with it to compensate for it. Have you considered that at all?
Yes.
Of what we're talking about, expanding the tee back. Mm-hmm, we could be wanting to discuss that later.
Objection again, because this is just a conversation between an attorney and the ranger.
All right, I'll limit it and I'll try to make it quick, all right?
And it's not really directed toward any direct testimony that was given or anything.
Have you considered using the area between the twelfth and the seventh or the eighteenth hole? There's an area there that would seem to be, it's been a long time since I've been through there. But would seem to be a perfect area for a driving range. Have you ever considered using that?
I don't know what area you're referring to, because the twelfth hole is nowhere near the eighteenth hole, I don't know.
They went side by side. Twelve, thirteen goes across the valley or up to the, across the valley from the plateau, you go down to the thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, fifteen. Should be the twelve.
Eighteen is adjacent to our practice area, our short game area, and that is in between fourteens.
You have an areas there, though, it's a pretty open space that runs for about four hundred yards.
I guess what's the point?
All right, I'll just, I'll just ask, I'll just bring it out on the record, okay? I believe that they're failing to look at alternatives. Right? The ranges that exist now is basically, I mean. This is progress. Things get busier, people, you know, technology evolves. It is too short, of course, for a drive. Other than putting on a humongous fence up. It's going to look terrible for the reasons already stated. You're looking at. A good short-range course the way it exists now, why not leave it at that way? If you wanted to make it a long range, why are the tee boxes oriented toward the shortest part of the boundaries there? They should be oriented, the whole tee box should be candid more toward the first hole. Yes, there's a problem with the first hole, but have they considered if you look at the first hole toward the green there in the upper third. Why not dogleg it over toward an open space there that would pull it away and leave more room for drive? If that's not sufficient, you have an area between the twelfth and the eighteen pole. There that's open. It's about two hundred yards wide and a good, at least four hundred and fifty yards in long. I've walked it many times. It's been a while, you know, but in the past few years, I don't walk as well around there. But I've been there enough times to know that's an area there that should be at least looked at for possibility of a drive. That's all I have to say.
So just for clarification. I mean, obviously, responsibility of ethics is on everybody.
Okay.
And so. You're just simply saying that the club has not looked at alternatives for repositioning or relocating. Their driving range, which I can imagine could be pretty pricey to do, but they haven't done that. It is. From my perspective as a board member. They're the one making the application. They can make whatever requests they want to make, it's, you know. Reasonable or outlandish as it can be, I mean, so, but it's them, for them to make. You're just simply saying they should have looked at alternatives.
I do, and what I would further say too is, and this is the lawyer part of me, I'd like to say. Is I would think that, you know, this bears some discussions between them and us. Brookside has had a habit in the past. They, they talk about being good neighbors. But they basically have had a habit of saying, this is what we want to do, take it or leave it. I think this bears some discussion, and what I would ask this. Board to do is consider basically adjuring this or at least continuing this matter for thirty days or so. To enable myself, other property members and counsel, and them to talk about this and discuss some alternatives. Because I believe that there's gonna have to be some bending both ways. Yes, there's gonna have to be a fence. And it's probably not gonna be everything everybody wants, the property owners. But by the same token, I fail to see why. Brookside should get cart blocked. That's just progress. Sometimes people have to make. Compromises, and I think this particular situation is ripe for a compromise. Thank you.
Mr. O'Keefe.
The testimony you give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and you want the truth held back?
I do. For a recent testimony, I, this is my add-on letter. Oh, I apologize. Okay, who's Ryan O'Keefe? Apologize, sorry about that. And this, this letter, I didn't bring extra copies, I just want that into the record. Are you out to scan that one in? Term of the board, I actually, I ask you to carefully consider the standards in section six forty-eight dot zero three six of the Perry Township zoning resolution. This proposal to replace a thirty-foot-high netting with a seventy-foot, eight-hundred-and-thirteen-foot-long wall of netting only thirty feet from the property line. Fails to test your code requirements. It does not advance the general welfare of the township. Section six forty dot zero three six point one, page one forty-three. Instead, it benefits a private interest while harming nearby residents. Second point, the applicant has raised safety concerns numerous times, but only until tonight they provided data. Would have been a nice part of the application to provide that, so I can actually counter any safety concerns that are in there. I know there was testimony tonight, I'm not prepared to answer those at this time. Third point, it, consistent with the intent purpose of zoning resolution sixty, six forty dot three six point two, page one forty-three. The exceptional use district is meant to be a balanced uses with us, with their surroundings, not to impose structures of a scale on the neighborhoods. Point number three, the, it's not compatible in appearance with the surrounding residential character. Section six forty point zero, zero three, uh, zero three six, point number four on page one forty-three. A seventy-foot-high barrier is out of place in a suburban, suburban setting. Next point, it creates a unreasonable adverse impact on adjacent properties. Section six forty point zero three six, uh, point eight, page one forty-three. Residents will live in the shadow of an intrusive structure that diminishes their quality of life and property values. And finally, the biggest shocker that I came tonight with was right here, and I think it is an important note. Was in the beginning of the meeting that there is no development plan. We cannot alter a plan without original plan. We've heard multiple testimonies, what it used to be, we've had people talk about, there's tee boxes. But those things would be captured in a development plan. Before we alter a development plan, I urge that we should go through a process to account what the current state is before we look to the future state. Therefore, I think we're completely out of order to consider alteration to a plan that we don't have. And I think that is upon us, that that is captured if we're gonna keep that zoning of that property that way. Therefore, for these reasons, the application does not meet the standards of the section six forty point zero three six. And I respectfully urge and rejection of the development plan modification, which doesn't exist to the original one, which we need to get take care of. Thank you, and have a good evening.
I just wanted to ask you a quick question about the, the shadowing of the nets.
Yes.
And the adverse impacts, one of the, that you said was shadowing from the.
Yes.
And do you know what the shadowing's gonna be?
Yes, I know what a top golf looks like, it's my personal experience seeing netting. And I've seen that netting before, in my opinion, that would look like that. The aesthetics of it, it would have been nice to have a AI-generated drawing. Usually when you have site planning, you'll have a drawing, what it looks like, you have the drawing of the net. But you don't have what the features around the surrounding areas. If you were to have it, you can visualize that. As I'm going down Iron Court, it'd be kind of nice to see my daughter going on the bike and seeing this imposing structure where instead of. where instead of sky, now I have a netting in front of it. That is my opinion on that, it's not expert tempo, it's my opinion.
Okay. So what you're saying is you, the shadowing and the height and all of that is what you think is going to be based on?
What, based off my, my life experiences?
Okay.
Based off my life experiences, right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend.
Mr. Thompson, are you giving this proceeding? Would it be the true, the full truth, and nothing but the truth publicly?
Yes. So my name is R. Michael Townsend, I live actually at the last house, and the hole number one is my backyard. So the netting won't exactly be right there, but looking at the, at least from the website, I think that there was some numbers that basically said it could be as long as, correct me if I'm wrong, 200 feet from the corner. When I measured that back myself, that brings it back up to the telephone pole, which is a little bit farther, I think, than it might have been, but I'm not really sure how it's going to be shifted. But that wasn't a concern. At a 70-foot fence, a 70-foot net, if you were to make that 30 feet from the property line, which is basically 30 feet away from the power lines, the height of the power lines at 23 feet, using Pythagoras' theorem, you would actually have about 37 feet if the net completely fell. So it's only about half the length of that would be on the power line. My concern is power. I mean, I actually put that in my notes, because the deal is everyone along that from all the way down has their power lines right there, and if you saw the existing fence now, you could see when we walked today how close that fence was to the power lines. Bringing it out another 15 feet with a 70-foot drop, it would drop about halfway of that 70 feet onto the power lines. Sure, is it possible that it won't fall? I mean, who knows, a wind, you know, maybe a microburst, you know, whatever snaps some wooden poles, makes it fall. I mean, I'm just saying, from a safety perspective, that is not a great safety thing to do.
None of the speakers, but I, you're raising a point. If I could, can I ask, so the power line, I'm sorry, Max, probably not, okay, sorry. Max, is the power line, is that a power, is that enough utility?
I don't know that answer.
Okay. It's kind of important to know what kind of line it is, at least to the question about.
It's definitely power.
It's power.
So. The transformers are at the end on top of the telephone pole.
So it is a power line.
Absolutely, that's where my power comes from, where everyone's power comes from.
What is the AEP easement for there?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, what is the easement that AEP has for that line? It's a question, the reason I ask the question, because I'm dealing with AEP in another project, and they want obviously more easement, and they're, so this is.
It's a narrow, I think it's 10 feet on center. But I'd have to, look, I'll open and see if I can.
No, that's it.
It's a very narrow easement.
Could we verify that with AEP? Never mind, don't worry, I'll ask tomorrow when we meet.
Yeah. We do have some of the easements.
Just if I could clarify, can somebody tell me what the distances from the power lines to where the poles will be? I couldn't tell from any of the pictures, I don't.
Approximately 30 feet.
It's 30 feet, but again.
The power lines, I don't think are on the property line, I think.
But again, if it's 30 feet, 70-foot thing dropping, it literally would hit in the middle of that 70-foot, because it's only 23 feet high.
And the same can be said for all of the 75 and 85-foot trees all along there, all there.
Perhaps.
Anything.
Anything at all.
Here. Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Wagner.
Mr. Thompson, are you giving this proceeding? Would it be the true, the full truth, and nothing but the truth publicly?
Yeah, my name's Matt Wagner, I live at 6673 Merlin Road. 6673 Merlin Road. I'm the last house on the fence, and the first house next on the west side of the fence that doesn't have a fence. And I want to thank all the people in the room for showing up today, I really, really appreciate the support. The one good thing, I said this the last time with the zoning, and the one good thing that came out of all this is that I got to know my neighbors really, really well, and they are excellent people. And I've never done anything like this in my life, so here I am. So the bottom line is that I, I like the view that I have right now. I am not interested in a 70-foot massive structure behind my house. I really like the trees that are there. When I bought the house four years ago, specifically, I sat down at the studio behind my house, and I told my wife, I really like this, and I'm really glad there's not a 20-foot-tall fence next to my, next, behind my house. I said that word. If there would have been the size of the fence now that was there, I would not have bought the house. And certainly would not have bought the house at 70 feet tall. And to say that this won't impact taxes with the value of my houses, there is no way, the only way I could figure that out is to put my house in the market and see what offers I get. Then you put up the fence, and I put it back on the market, and I see what offers I get. Nobody knows what it does to my house. I would suggest that, yes, it would lower my tax, the value of my house. I may be wrong. So I oppose the development plan. I respectfully request all the documentation from the zoning, the meeting that happened in the beginning of March be submitted to the board so you can look it over. There's a lot of data in there that I don't have access to, I only had four days to prepare. That's the day I got the letter. I could not obtain legal counsel in the four days since I got the letter, so I'm working on my own. I did talk to a few attorneys over the last couple of days. I spent most of the last five days on the phone talking to people about this project, so I'm not super jazzed about that. You know, I think the bottom line is that Brookside has created a difficulty, and they're seeking a remedy for their own problem, and this has been suggested by other people. I do have Google, you know, I suggest people look at Google Earth over the years. I have some really grainy pictures, because I only have a black and white printer, I'm sorry about that, beginning in 1994 and ending with April of 2024, that show what happened with the tee boxes and the addition of structures that have happened over the intervening nearly 30 years. I'd like to submit those. I only have, sorry, and again, they're grainy, but I think you get the gist. You know, today, when I was looking at the property, I haven't been out to the tees that often, but behind the tees are two long structures with astroturf on top of them. They look like they're like original tee boxes, is that correct? Are those the original tee boxes from, from way back? There's two long structures right before the plaque that says this.
I can't speak if they're original, I can tell you that those are formed, we have inclement weather or not enough grass on the tee, we hit off the mats.
Do you know where they're, Brian, check?
Those mats, I think they were put in price seven or eight years ago.
Okay.
The mats.
Punctured structures that they reside upon, no idea, okay. But, you know, they've, they've increased the tee boxes, they added this golf garage, which is closer to the houses. And then they want to seek remedy from us, or balls getting in our yards. You know, when I, Miss Cunningham states in her, in her note that they were unable to meet the requests of the neighbors. So I attended the meeting in June at Brookside. At the time, I specifically talked to Max about this, and I said, "If Brookside ever consult somebody to look at your course and say, these are the options that you have, you can do this, 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 and this." And his answer was no. I said, "How did you come up, did you have any other suggestions other than the fence?" His answer was, "No, we only considered the fence." I asked him specifically, "Did you include having an iron's-only range?" "No." I said, "Do you consider removing the parking lot at the back of the tee boxes, putting the tee boxes farther back where the parking lot is, and then leaving everything else that is?" "No." "Did you consider changing the orientation of the driving range by 90 degrees clockwise, so that the driving range, instead of aiming at houses, is aimed at the clubhouse and the fairway?" It's already been noted here that golfers are getting hit in the fairway. This net does nothing for that. There's absolutely no more protection from this net for golfers than there was today. He's, the answer was no. And then I suggested move, have you considered moving the driving range to another part of the course? And he did say, "Yes." There's an area between the second and the fourth fairways, it's three different fairways, second, third, fourth fairway. In the original images that they put up earlier, it was blank, now it's filled with very old growth trees. And it's a possibility they could put there, but it would be exceedingly expensive to do it, that was your answer. And I, I would agree with you, and I don't want that, because that takes away from all the value of the houses. All the views of the houses along the course would be inhibited by that. You take down those trees, they're looking at blank, and I don't want that from neighbors. So my first question was, is this common? Now, they showed you pictures of nets, they're not in central Ohio. These are at other places, is this common in central Ohio? So there's 67 golf courses in central Ohio. This is the only golf course in central Ohio that aims range balls at purple peoples' outfits. It's the only one, nobody else does that. There are other fences in town, but they are protecting golfers or maintenance workers from errant balls in the course. None of them back up to residences. This is a massive structure, 70 feet high, 800 feet long. It's of a different height, length, material, construction, and location from the current fence. This is not a modification of the fence, this is a completely different structure, and I think should be treated as such. And it goes longer, it extends across at least my property, possibly into Michael's property. So it's a completely different set of events. I would argue, and I would, I would talk about Mark's note that, you know, this is, this fence was an existing chain fence from the 60s. There was a change in 2002, and if you look at those notes, look at what the, look at what the tee boxes did between 1998 and 2002, they doubled in depth, they went farther out immediately, like within a year, those went up. So this, this wasn't a pre-existing fence. My question is, Perry Township put in new, they had their own laws in 1982. I would imagine when this fence went from 10 feet to 20 feet, there had to be, something happened. Either Brookside did this on their own, Brookside approached Perry Township for, is there any variance? Or Brookside approached Perry Township for a modification of plan. Is it up to Perry Township to hold those records you only? Or is it up to Brookside to have copy of those records that they can have when they're approaching zoning issues? I would imagine that would be, you have records and they have records. I may be wrong in that, maybe you should fill me in later. Is it ordinary, or is it common for people to lose, lose supporting documents for this modification of plan? Or is it common, or is it extraordinary difference? I would leave that up to you guys to mention. I agree, I am concerned about the height of the fence and the close proximity of the fence to the electrical power lines. It's also cable as well that runs down there, I think wow comes through there. I would suggest that if you were to approve this, that there be an offset closer to 70 feet to help the people that are living in that district from any untoward issues, a lightning strike, whatever you want to call it. But I would hope that you would, you would consider that. The last couple of things, is there precedent? So this is an uncommon thing, we have already determined this is an uncommon thing in central Ohio. The second thing is, is there precedent for residents going up against golf courses over fence requirements? And the answer is yes, in 2012 and 2013, Muirfield twice brought up a fence revolution, resolution. The first was to raise their fence height from four feet to six feet along the course. Then the residents went ballistic, and ultimately, they backed down and they did not change that. The second thing is, the following year, they wanted to put up temporary fences, which were very high, to keep people from jumping onto the course during tournaments. And again, that was voted down by the residents, so there is precedent in central Ohio with these, which was, is talked about in exclusive or exclusive use zone, that it's been voted down despite the fact that the golf course thought it was appropriate.
I object to the indulgence for the record and to hearsay, but I'd interrupt you.
But that's fine, this is coming from the dispatch. I don't know where else I could get this type of information in four days without legal counsel, counsel.
Late finish.
Yeah. I am concerned about if they expand the range and they want to expand the hours, if there's currently some type of modification so that they can increase the light for the range to go longer in the evening. All these houses but up to the range, if you remove old growth trees and any increased light along the course will go right into those houses, and that would be a difficulty on the residents that are living here now. Already, as it is, there are spotlights coming off the clubhouse that shine right in my back, in my living room. I don't have to walk, I don't have to have lights on in my living room at night. I mean, I can walk without bumping into anything from the course. And so for these reasons, I'm hoping that the proposal fails to meet the clear requirements of the 640.036. I urge, I respectfully urge the board to note our diamonds modification for our request. I would imagine you probably have questions for them. Anything I can answer?
I do.
Sorry.
Just to point out one thing, just for clarification, what happens in Dublin is Dublin.
Yeah.
I'm always surprised when Muirfield goes to Dublin, Dublin doesn't lose something, because they've usually been to the entrance to the ring.
Right.
So, but that's Dublin, and it's Perry Township, we're the smallest municipal township in the state, so it's, I know that it sounds, okay, they did it over there, so we shouldn't do it over here. That precedence doesn't really hold water in that regard. So if we were to have done it in the past year, and then you made that argument, and that, that argument would then hold some weight. But I appreciate all the arguments that you made, you made some very good arguments, and I appreciate that you put into it the last five days, I understand, yeah, you know that, so I appreciate you being here.
I have a question for Max, or, lighting, that we mentioned. Do you guys have lighting after, out after dusk, you know, that you guys are allowed to, you know, golfers can be, living?
We do not.
Okay.
You're trying to determine what lights.
Lighting that we're talking about.
There's a light on the front of the barn that if maybe.
But you guys don't have.
Range lighting.
Yeah, range lighting, yes.
My concern was a Topgolf issue.
Well, yeah, so, so a couple of things, and I know Topgolf has been mentioned a couple of times. The fence, just for everybody's reference, the fence in Topgolf was 175 feet. So put it in scale of things, we're talking like a third of what Topgolf is. So just, you know, not, not saying it's right or wrong, just to put everything in perspective.
Is that our last point?
It is.
Anybody else want to speak?
Thank you.
I have one question.
Can you come up and?
Sure.
Take a short break, you're the last one, just to get her.
It's just one quick question.
Mr. Thompson, are you giving this proceeding? Would it be the true, the full truth, and nothing but the truth publicly?
Yeah, so the question I have.
State your name, please.
David Vargo, and I live at 6681, and I'm on number two.
6681 Merlin.
Yeah, so my question is, if you, as a board, allow this or entertain it to a great extent, how does that level with the rest of the township and the height requirement on fences as it is now? Because if you let them go to 75 feet, and I want to put a fence around my yard, I can go 12 feet, come ask for that bearing. I just think you'd be setting a potential precedence for maybe members around the hills, of course, wanting a higher fence around the yard for privacy. Because there's people who have fences around their yards, and neighbors can look into the backyard. I mean, I know a handful of neighbors, that they may say, I'd like to put up a 14-foot fence for more privacy. That's all I wanted to ask.
Do you think you want to pick that?
I mean, I can, so your property is done differently, so there's a different process for that? And you would have to get a variance? That would be the process.
Okay.
And the BZA would consider that application.
So how is this, how is there?
Their zone different, their zone under exceptional use, and they've chosen to amend. There's some disagreement to that, amend their development plan. And the development plan, if it were to be approved by the board, that is the zoning for the property. So that would establish that standard.
So it's just different rules for that?
Correct.
And not special, different. And not special, different rules is outside of.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because it's zone different.
You mind if?
Can we take a break?
Yeah, we're gonna take just a five-minute break here. We always do that. This court reporter's been typing nonstop here for almost an hour and forty-five minutes. We're gonna take a five-minute break. I think we've talked to everyone just to plenty of slip and all that, so step your legs. It'll be a short five-minute break. We'll just reconvene a quarter to.
So we've heard a lot of information, both sides tonight. I'm going to, I think the board needs to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, before we deliberate, I believe counsel for Brookside wants to.
Rebuttal rebuttal.
Okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, please, please.
Max.
Please take your name from the director again.
Max Reed.
And Max, you've been sworn in. You're still under oath. Okay. I want to ask you a couple of questions about what the golf club has won. And and also, I think there were, there is an assertion that the golf club is not willing to consider any other alternatives. In in your mind, is that true?
That is not.
And can you describe for the board how the how the club made the decision to pursue raising this net?
We have a committee structure. We have a golf committee and a greens committee, and then we have a board. The committees come up with ideas, recommendations. The board approves those recommendations or sends them back. And then the board decides is it something that needs to go the entire membership. So for this particular project, we talked about options. We talked about restricted balls. We talked about only seven irons, only short game. We have a short game. We built that four or five years ago. That takes care of everything under a hundred yards, give or take, very well received. For what we're trying to do and to evolve our brand, if you will, this is the most ideal spot we have through our committee vetting and then through the board, and then eventually the members voted on this and approved it in May of two thousand and twenty-three at the annual meeting.
Did you consider relocating the driving range to a different location on the golf course?
We did. The the only feasible location is between poles two, three, and four, which is bigger than the area we're in now, and that is full of fully mature trees. And the the club made the decision that that would not be economically feasible to, one, clear it, and then, two, to move the whole operation there. So this was the solution for this time in this age of Brookside. This was the best for the club, as decided on by the committees and approved on by the board and eventually approved on by the entire membership.
And it was not with disregard to other alternatives?
That's correct.
And then after that was decided, what was the next step?
The next step was to explore how we get this net done. I contacted the township. We we had some folks come out, do what we did tonight, kind of look at the area and see what we could do, and then we started the process.
And I think there was also some questions about the lighting of the the driving range. Is there any nighttime lighting on the driving range?
There is no nighttime lighting of the driving range. There are no plans for that. We shut the range down at a certain time, I think dusk, so we can start clearing, and so that Joe and his crew is able to do the maintenance for sale. There are not.
Even with the data?
Correct.
I don't think I have any further questions if the board doesn't.
I got a question. There was some testimony. Are you familiar with other clubs in central Ohio?
Some. Clearly, I spent time at Columbus Country Club in sixteen years at Muirfield Village.
There was testimony that this this club is a little bit unique, and it's the only club in central Ohio or some area that the driving range aims directly at homes. You know that to be true?
I don't know that to be true, but I don't know it not to be true. If I I'm trying to remember what's at Columbus Country Club, and I I I think that they are going towards potential residences. The border of their property, they hit away from the border of their property, if I remember correctly, is that? Yeah.
They hit towards residents?
Correct, or or away from the interior of the club, similar to ours. And 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 again, it's most of the clubs. I mean, you've got.
I'm looking like the Worries Hills.
Right.
And I don't golf, but their driving range kind of shoots out towards the golf course, and they have netting that's like in the, at the end of that, but they're not shooting at residential homes. They're shooting in the middle of the course, and the golfers are protected because they're behind that.
Max?
Oh, go ahead. You're right. I was just gonna say, I've had some strains there in where you are, so.
So at Columbus Country Club, my father-in-law used to be the general manager there. They went through a reconfiguration at some point. They reconfigured the driving range there?
I don't know that answer. I was, again, I was there two thousand and eight through fourteen.
I know they just made a renovation or like towards the end of this tenure as general manager there, but.
Anything else?
All right, James.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
On questions allowed instead of like to do.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow one or two. And then what we've really, based on all the stuff we heard, we gotta kind of debrief and ultimately, we're gonna discuss merits of the application, and then we did recess. So if you want to put up and ask your question or.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Come on. Okay. Why put this area in again? But can you say your name again? Mary Rose.
Thank you.
Why was this first brought up as a variance, and now it's a modification of something? Why this different procedure? I mean, when we already discussed this once in the spring, why are we doing it again?
So I think the applicant's attorney already stated why, but she can probably respond to that, and then we can provide her the opportunity to to close.
Just in case. So the reason that that, first of all, the first application was filed without advice of counsel by by the club. And then when sort of there was a lot of discussion about the variance procedure, they called me after the, it went late in that process. And my first comment was, how could you be doing a variance procedure in a planned district with in an in a exceptional use district, which is requires a plan, is a planned district, you can't do a variance in a planned district. It would be a modification of a plan. And so the, I think the township dismissed the variance. There was no decision on it. It did not, BZA did not proceed with that because, and the township also did not consult their own legal counsel about whether that was the right process or not. And so when we looked at it and looked at your code and looked at the the county zoning code and the zoning in the county before, it was my determination, and I think your legal counsel agreed, that that is a, the variance is not an appropriate process in the zoning classification of EU, which it, without dispute, it is zoned EU in in the township. Without dispute, it was zoned EU in the county based on the zoning maps. The problem is the the rest of the paperwork that goes with that.
So I just first of all, the the application process generated by the applicant property owner in this case.
Yes, yes, that's true.
So obviously, we have to, the township has to accept whatever application kind of walks through the door.
Understood.
So.
Understood.
And I think it, we always say this, and I know Mr. Rover like appear this position as an attorney, is that we always advise people that they should approach their legal counsel, any any legal question.
That was not intended as a dismaging remark in any way.
Okay. And and I'm just, I just wanted to clarify how that process works. We we have to we have to entertain anything that actually.
Agreed. Agreed. So like.
I didn't take it as that, so.
Yeah, it was not meant to be. I'm just, when the, when the question was, how were we here before once, and why aren't we now? That's the answer.
Yes.
That's how you were here once before, and why we're here now. I'm also gonna, I I brought these as exhibits. I think I gave them to you in the pack. We brought a certified copy of the deed of the of the plat for these properties that bought the course, which was from nineteen fifty-seven, when it was done, original building permits, nineteen fifty-seven. It took about ten years to build that out. And also your own zoning code map, even though I know you have it as part of your records, sometimes it's easier in these when we just have those as part of the pack, as saying you're looking at. So that's really why they're there. And then the 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 last thing I want to do is is talk about the golf club and the standards that I believe, I understand there's disagreements, but the standards that I believe that apply to this under your, under your zoning code and that this board should be looking at and applying. And one of the things I think, I know we've heard a lot about the residential properties and the surrounding properties and the character of those properties. And, you know, one of the other things associated with the the uses is the purpose and intent of a exceptional use district, and it's created because there are special uses in that district, and it's created because those special uses need special standards that aren't typical in the rest of the area, like a golf course. And and in in your code, it makes it very clear that the zoning there is for recreation and amusement. They were there long before any of these residential properties were built around them in either the city of Columbus or the township. And your code also makes it clear that the Golf Country Club and similar structures and uses, including but not limited to restaurants, swimming pool, pickleball, tennis courts, all accessory and uses and and structures typically association, associated with a golf country club. Now, we can talk about where there are nets in other locations and country clubs and in golf ranges, but the bottom line is that is an accessory use that is traditional and typical to a golf course. And your code clearly contemplates that it will, it could be on a golf course. And in this, this is a centennial golf course that is struggling to stay relevant and be a top tier for the benefit of the club or the community. And they're, what they're trying to do is to modernize and stay current and be able to host some top level, remain a top-level course and host top-level tournaments. There's a lot of discussion about moving things around. One of the beauties of their course from, this is my personal, which I shouldn't say, but this is my personal view, is is the 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 age of those trees. I mean, it, when you have an old growth course like that, one of the things you don't want to be doing is taking down trees. And this is, this is an alternative available to the course to remain viable, to stay viable, and to try to preserve a lot of the natural assets of that area, which include trees on the course. It is a view for sure of neighboring properties, but it's not their, it's not property they own. It's the property of the course. So I just wanted to say that as politely as I could, not for the purposes of aggravating people or neighbors, but just to say that is also a factor of the nature and character of the neighborhood, and that is actually the real reason why those exceptional use districts exist, to preserve the nature and character of those areas as well. And that's what the golf course is trying to do. Now that said, the more boring things are the going through the nine factors of your code. It is in the PowerPoint. I'm not going to be labor at all. I would just sort of do a quick summary, if that's okay with you. It's been a long night. And I don't need to read everything, but in in your code, in a planned district, planned district, if if you zoned it planned district, it had a plan. If there wasn't a plan that they were required to present, then the plan was the current conditions on existing use. There's no other way to read your code and have them protect their property rights and the interest they had. Otherwise, it's a taking from the zoning, in my opinion. That said. Um, that said, um, the nine factors are in these two pages. The first of those factors is, is the proposed development plan consistent in all aspects with the purpose, criteria, intent, and standards of the zoning code? And whether any divergence is warranted? Again, I kind of started with that, we're in an exceptionally used district. It's designed in part to allow for and protect golf courses, certainly, you have to consider the, the adjacent properties. Um, and we're not saying that they should be disregarded, but it, it, you, you cannot lose facts, sight of the fact that the golf course is there and, and it is in a district that is supposed to perpetuate any uses normally associated with a golf course, and this is one of those. Um, should this board determine that a divergence is necessary, that this isn't an accessory structure? I mean, it's not, it's not a property line fence, it's, it's a, a structure that's built to contain golf balls. The green fence was, the green structure was for that, to contain golf balls, this structure has no other purpose, they would not put this fence up, but this structure up, but for, um, containing golf balls in a driving range and a golf course in an exceptional use district in the township. Um, should it be determined that a divergence is necessary because of that height? Because you determine that it is a fence or it has to meet the sort of general development standards for fences in the township? Um, a divergence can be granted by, um, this board as part of its decision in this case, and that's what your zoning code frankly expects you to do and that's the whole point of the planned district and the plan required in the EU district when the township, um, zoned it to EU when they came in. Um, the question is, the proposed development plan meets all design features required in the code. So there are no design features for an accessory use or a safety net in a golf course. Should you find that there are design features associated with a fence? That they don't meet, divergence could be granted to allow for it, although we believe that that doesn't apply because I think your code clearly contemplates that it is an accessory use for a golf course. Um, the proposed development plan is in keeping with the existing land use, character and physical development of, potential of the area. Well, the potential development of the area is, I mean, is fully developed unless the golf course is redeveloped for something else. Otherwise, you know, there are existing houses built right up to the edge all the way around that golf course. And, um, it's already been established. Uh, and when you live next to a golf course, like, you know, people are willing to accept apparently golf balls landing in their property and in their yards. Um, but that creates a liability to the club, to its players when that is happening. Um, and even if the property owner may feel that they're, they'd rather have a view than, than, uh, making sure golf balls are contained. You know, that doesn't protect their guests or other people who might be in the area, that doesn't protect the club, that doesn't protect some of the confrontations that may happen on the golf course when those things happen. It's just not a good situation and the golf course is aware that this is a problem. They see piles of balls on the golf course coming out of yards, they see, you know, you see them when, when you, when you viewed the property, there were yards with golf balls all over in the yards. Clearly, it's an issue and it's irresponsible for the golf course not to try to do something about it to keep those golf balls contained within the course and to try to enhance the safety as much as they can. That's what they're trying to do here, as well as make sure that they have a top-tier course through that. So when you're talking about compatibility, that is a significant factor of compatibility, is making sure that these properties can exist safely next to each other. Um, and another one is, um, the development plan would be compatible in use and appearance with surrounding land uses. And that is the toughest one, for sure, the, the golf course does not deny that, that it is a compatibility issue for the neighbors. We understand that, but it's also a compatibility of use issue for the golf course to make sure that they are, their use continues and that there's, there's safety with that. And it is, I understand people like to disregard the fact that it's a safety issue, but there is no doubt that it is. If somebody gets hurt by one of those golf balls or if there's confrontations as a result of them, um, that is, that is, um, a significant problem for the golf course. What they tried to do is go out and find the most compatible thing that they can do to try to contain these balls and be the least disruptive for the neighbors. I, they don't deny that it's a large structure, for sure. But it has the most visible netting, you can see, we have seen these changes, I used to go to ice hockey games, there were narrow nets. I mean, there was plastic things and now suddenly there are nets everywhere. Go to Huntington Stadium, there are nets all around the baseball field. It's not, well, not all around, but around the infield. Um, and, you know, those are, those, just part of the modern times where, where we have to be responsible to safety standards and issues and be responsible, property owners, um, even if it isn't the most visually compatible thing that the neighbors desire. Um, the one is whether the, um, the next five on the list, five, six, and seven, um, are this, the, the safety net really is no, have no effect on essential public services, on the efficiency of public and utility services being provided to any of these properties, whether, um, it's accessible through township roadways. Um, and the way to, um, so all of those, this a safety net is not gonna affect that. There will be a construction period. Um, all the equipment will come in through the club entrance off of one sixty-one, not through township roads. So it shouldn't affect any township roads during the construction period. Uh, the eighth factor is the proposed development plan is compatible with any adjacent residential areas and designed in such a way to minimize any unreasonable adverse impact existing on existing residential areas in the township. Again, we understand that. It is, it's a big net, it's, there's, they're, they're tall poles, it's seventy feet. Um, and it still comes down to the same issues, they, they've tried to do everything they can to visually minimize that impact. That netting will be much less visibly intrusive to look through than what the current barrier is there. I think that, as Max said, the, the club originally was proposing to leave that, the green barrier up and put the net in front of it, so there would be two, and, um, the there was a lot of neighborhood opposition to that, so they came back and said, okay, well, we'll take it down. And, um, started to take down vegetation and prepare for that and, um, there may be a, a change in that, I don't know. And then, um, there are such other considerations that may be deemed relevant by the board. Uh, and what's, I think, one of the things about planned district, I suppose, in, in a a variance as well, but in a planned district is the board can impose additional conditions relating to the development plan with regard to the type and extent of public improvements to be installed, landscaping, improvements and maintenance of open space areas and other development characteristics. So if there are development characteristics that go hand in hand with that fence, I think, um, the, the board has the right to impose conditions on this. And I think that the club is open-minded and willing to try to collaborate and cooperate as much as they can. I think there was opinion among some, some residents and the club on whether or not there was ever any compromise or meetings or there was, I did attend the one neighborhood meeting after I got bugged. And certainly, there, there is a difference of opinion, there's no doubt about that. Um, and the club was unable to, you know, redesign their course, take down, you know, mature trees and do a lot of the things that, that were raised as compromise. Um, they are willing to work with the neighbors, they're trying to compromise, but, um, eh, the viability of the club and, and the necessity of that significant structure and even your own observations of the, the golf balls on the course and off the course that are errant in other properties is a significant ongoing problem for the golf course, that, that needs to be resolved, and this is their best way to resolve it. Um, again, I, I, the impact is going, there will be an impact, but that the proposed netting is sh- thirty, twenty, fifteen feet shorter than the trees that are already there, the old growth trees that, that make that neighborhood. Um, and the, many of which are on the golf course, uh, between their property line and, um, between the netting and their profit, the fence and their property line. They desire to con- continue to keep that character as much as they can and try to shield and safety and, and provide safety for the golf course and continue their top-tier status. So that's why we're here today. Um, and they just respectfully request that, that this board consider um, all of the evidence before you and grant them the opportunity to put up a net.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, I hope with the question, this is more of a thought, not a question, I don't expect you to answer. And I know that we can debate whether the development plan, um, were there, I just wonder if there were any structural changes to the property uh, since nineteen eighty-two, did not come to the township, that should have come potentially to the township with a modification of that. I'm not asking you to answer that question, I, I wonder in my mind if there was, because the purpose of a development plan is to give you the baseline.
Right.
Obviously, and to move forward, and those changes that could be brought to the governing body, uh, to determine whether a modification is necessary. I just, I wonder that, you don't have to answer that question, I'm not asking for an answer.
I don't know the answer, except that I do know the answer that we're here today. And we're here today because the change was so significant and because the township, or because the club contacted the township and met with township officials and started working on that process. So that's why we're here today, they didn't try to just put it up without asking.
Appreciate it.
The question is, how does that fit in your code? In my opinion, it fits in as a modification to your development plan.
One last thing, does council have a copy of the annihilation agreement between the township and the city of Columbus?
Do I?
Yes.
Uh.
We're gonna get you a copy.
I don't.
Yeah. To have it as a reference point.
Um, so before we recess, I have twelve exhibits that I'd like the board to enter into the record. We'll just read those off. So we have all. If I have the, um, Brookside Golf and Country, Country Club um, materials that were presented, and I believe.
One packet.
The packet, and that contained yeah, six exhibits. Um, exhibit seven, um, I have identified as the actual application submitted, uh, by Brookside. Application, uh, exhibit eight is the pictures and maps and supporting comments of, uh, Mr. Rose. Exhibit nine is, uh, Mrs. Rose, uh, his materials that were submitted. Uh, exhibit ten is, uh, Mr. Cap's materials. Exhibit eleven is, uh, Mr. Keefe's materials. And exhibit twelve were the aerial shots provided by, uh, Mr. Wagner. So if we could move those into the record?
Yes.
Thank you for your time and attention, we appreciate it.
Um, but what I'd like to do is, um, I'd like to move to the end of recess and to for private deliberations to consider as merits of the application, and, uh, we need to do that by roll call both.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rover?
Yes.
Is it?
I gotta be, oh, I did, maybe, that's where it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, it's always where they're talking, or, yeah. The more this way, you know, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get, is that? I'll do the master. Sure. So, oh, there's the two ladies. Yeah. Are you speaking? Well, yeah. Actually, I'm being the speaker, so.
Carol?
I don't have time today, um.
You're not me?
Sorry. It's sad. But it's that, it's one of these, uh.
I know.
It's a second. I just, I just, I just, yeah. For giving. Just, I mean, I'm pretty much.
I should have.
Yeah.
When you get paid, here's what I'm gonna do. Allow you to continue to raise your township business with your. With with your, your knowledge and work and I'm not gonna hurt you.
Let's see. There's been so much confusion.
Yeah, there. It's coming better.
It was all regains. So there were challenges. It didn't. And yeah.
Okay. Beautiful. It is. Oh, right.
I mean, my daughter was better than my first apartment. We did.
Absolutely.
So it went.
They couldn't hear.
I know you guys had something behind that before. I heard from the resident.
That's crazy too. And you see people coming, go, you see the bells. That gets crazy just talking.
We moved there, so we moved in with six oldest was. Nine months old.
But still.
And he's twenty-six.
There's no.
Right, big talk.
So let me think about that.
Oh, you can see it, Randy. You can imagine.
Well, I've been saying the same thing. Everybody has left.
My son has a.
I'm not, you guys. But tell. Yeah, you guys said.
Yeah, if you, if you want to clear and hit the road for the night, or you can stay here.
He's gonna be my bodyguard going back to my, in front of my neighbors.
Thank you both.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tyler, you're assigned to.
I'll be in the yard. It's just nice seeing.
You might as well put it on a lighter surface.
Hey, Max, the lighting I think you're talking about is you have the parking lot lit up. I don't know if that directly affects residential houses, but I know when we roll through, it's. It's pretty, especially the the new tennis courts.
But he's the other way.
Yeah, that's the only thing I could think of when you guys were trying to think about. Again, I'm there every night, I'm with nights.
Okay.
I don't think it's substantial, but.
No, hell no. I'm putting my chair back in my office and eventually.
That was nice. I, you know, that's not the, not the pattern, but those.
Yeah, like I said, I, I mean, again, I told him, I said, thankfully, I'm not a member of Brookside and I live in the area, so I have. I think one thirty, thirty minutes it went out.
Okay.
Have a great night.
Thanks, you too. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Tyler. You may want to hear this. Were you the good pick up?
We, are we, we gonna come out of this? So we're coming out of deliberations by roll call vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. English?
Yeah.
Mr. Chaney?
Yes.
Mr. Rupert?
Yes.
Okay. So I think what. We all heard was. We took in a lot of information. I think we, we either have to. Pass, we can either close the hearing and decide or we can go with the continuing. And I think what we want to do is we want to do a thirty day continuance, which puts us September the twenty-fourth. However, in the meantime, what we heard was. Things like, well, the club won't work with us. And then we heard the club says, hey, we'll, we'll work with you. And then we hear, yeah, we get there needs to be a fence, but we, you know, take down green fence. And then we hear, no, the green fence is fine. Then we hear, well, if you're gonna put a net, can it not be seventy feet? So we think that there's some. Back and forth with the neighbors to do. So what we'd like to see in the thirty days is. See how we, and we had a very similar project or very similar project in township was Korean church. And I will tell you, day one, it was pitforks. I mean, it was absolutely, and I think we. Kind of allowed it to get to a point where both sides sort of found common ground. Ended up being a good project, you know, for, for the, you know, the neighbors were saying, property values, all these sorts of things. But I think at the end of the day, we, we, we found a really good medium. So I would encourage you guys in that thirty day period. To do whatever you gotta do to work with neighbors to see if we can find a common ground. And then we'll reconvene on the twenty-fourth to.
Hear it.
Hear any additional. Things.
Yep. Just to give a couple of examples, you know, I mean. Did you guys reach an agreement on either keeping or not keeping the, I'll call it the family fence? You know, is there, is there. Is there a desire like for landscaping, vegetation, pine trees, but you're gonna have thirty feet between the fence and and property. That's right. Screening or something like that. Anything that you can agree on, I think will go a long way to hopefully getting something that both sides could. Be happy about rather than sort of a winner or loser here.
If it's possible.
I hear you. I would love to come by.
Okay.
Let's put it that way. I had given my experiences today. Stuff to go by. I never say nothing.
Well, we're really dealing with about eight people, you know, eight property owners. But the thing is, one person can just be a hardliner and just say, you know. I'll take my chances and. Make some of the work.
We want you to, if possible, to make the effort.
Absolutely.
That's all we can ask of you at the moment now.
Very skeptical. And a couple of people in this room know how early we tried doing this. I've been in the one gentleman's home. I've spent. Over two hours discussing with him and it's, I, I don't, I don't think he understands what we're trying to accomplish. I think they just see big net, ugly structure, our property values down. And I'm not.
But I could point, Max, I could point to the Scioto Country Club. Scioto, they have what, two engines and they're like right in the middle, but there's no, I mean, they have a target. Driving range. They don't have what you guys are wanting and that's a, you know, that's a driving range.
But they've got a lot, lot more ground than we do. That's how they're able to do that from both ends and have all the T-space.
Yeah, right. I mean, it, look. They're urban golf courses and you guys, I would, you know, that was the one thing I wrote down. It's like you guys are an urban golf course. You guys were established way before, but then all of a sudden you've got residents coming in and croaching pine, which limits your ability to, to do things. It's not like, hey, a kinsale where, you know, they developed it and, you know, you got these huge driveway, they were, it's sort of you guys. Had to react to the pressures that came with development around you. And, you know, I think that's, it needs to be considered. But I still think that there's some room to talk with the neighbors to get something, because I heard. I heard both sides. I really did. I mean, I've got a thousand notes on here. And I think it's, I, I think just give it another shot.
I'll, I'll, I'll do your wishes. I'll, I'll go back to the board and, I mean, we saw the reaction. When we had them at the club and they thought we were gonna show off. Let them decide basically is what came out of that. I'm not sure any of those options and we, we picked the one they wanted for you.
And Max, if, if that's the case and. Essentially, because you're leaving it in our hands.
Understood.
Okay, and, you know, I always say that when I'm at the planning commission, it's, I know that I've always done the right thing. Both sides walk away not totally happy. My hope is always, and I always tell the developers, listen, yes, upset residents, give us some time. And they kind of marinate a little bit and then go back and have the conversation and you can only try. So they got the other parties, all parties that's been willing to. Put themselves in your shoes and you put yourselves in their shoes and. Because we, I think the board heard that there may be areas of compromise. And so parties at least should explore it.
All right.
Kind of like having the parties engage in solo discussions while the jury's at, you know, I've done that before. And, you know, it's, it, it, you do tend to get a little more to the point. And, and kind of sharpen the focus when there's a dead point. You know, when you were talking about it before at the club. It was still kind of just sort of out there. Now, that's okay, we've had the hearing, you know, we're gonna know in. Thirty-five days what the board decides. Somebody's gonna be happy, somebody's not gonna be happy. Could we, could we at least agree on some things here? And if you can't, great. If you can't, then you can't, but you know, thirty days will know and that's not. I think that's the right amount of time. It's not, you don't want to make it too long, you don't want to make it too short. Some people are saying they like to get legal counsel. They only have four or five days. Just gives everybody time to sit back. It's almost like a post-trial briefing or whatever, but. See if you can come up with something. If you can't, you can't, and then we'll decide.
You do miss a motion.
So I move to continuing the hearing. It's not by roll call vote, by second vote. Yeah. Vote.
Yes, yes. And that's going to be continued to September twenty-four. Or six.
Six.
PM here. At this location.
At township. Okay, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.